This.
All right, everybody.
We click the button. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Maynard zoning board meeting of March 28th. It's now 7:05 PM. We have two items on the agenda. The first item is approving of the minutes. So have the zoning board.
Oh, please mute if they're not muted.
Very good. So have everybody on the zoning board read the draft minutes and can we get a motion to approve?
Well, you're all muted now.
So somebody.
Make a motion to approve.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Excellent.
All right, that was Paige and Leslie seconding.
Correct. The other item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'm going to recuse myself and Paige, you're gonna take over.
Sure. Thank you, Paul. Hi, everyone. My name is Paige Sepiga. I'm the vice chair. So just before we begin, I just want to say the open meeting of the Maynard zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. And this order does allow public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. So this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals is convening by video conference and telephone via Zoom as posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. Please note, as was just mentioned, that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. So accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to share your screen of your computer and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting are available on Board Docs and we recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless they know otherwise. So now we will turn to the second item on the agenda, which is the public hearing for 27 Concord Street. So I'll now open the public hearing and read the legal notice into the record. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9 and 15, the Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals will hold the public hearing on Monday, March 28th, 2022, at 7:00 PM remotely via Zoom to hear all persons interested in the special permit application filed by Christian Garcia, 27 Concord Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, of 1754. The subject property 27 Concord Street is located within the general residence zoning district. Consistent with Section 3.2.5 of the zoning bylaws, the partitioner is requesting a special permit allowing a trade shop use for general contracting within the subject property. A copy of the application package is on file with the Office of Municipal Services Office and can be provided by emailing OMS@townofmaynard.net or by calling 978-897-1302. I believe that is all the housekeeping items that may occur. So at this point, now that the public hearing has been opened, I'll turn it over to the applicant to introduce himself and describe the request. I believe we have the applicant here today or tonight.
Kristen, are you on?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm here. There's a reason I was pushing my camera. I just seem blank. How are you today?
Good, thanks.
Great.
Bill, I think if you're talking, you might be muted.
Indeed, I am. If there's a little echo, so if everybody could please mute except for the speaker. Thank you.
Okay, Christian. So at this point, I think it'd be helpful if you could explain your request, if you're still there.
Yes.
And introduce yourself as well.
Yeah, yeah, my name is Christian Garcia and I'm owner at C and K Roofing, Inc. And I file a request through the through our Maynard that I would like to see if I'm allowed to go to a trade shop here on my garage, which I have one commercial vehicle and all personal vehicle, which is two of them. I have a side garage in the back and one side garage on the right side of my property and that's which I'm using as a home office for me and for to my employees here. I think you're muted. There you go. Sorry.
Oops, sorry about that. Thank you. At this point, I think we'll open it up to members of the board to see if any board members have questions. I have a few, but I'll hold my questions after till everyone else on the board has had a chance to speak. Are there any board members that have questions? Yep, Leslie?
Oh, I'm like an explanation of what exactly goes on on the property. How many vehicles are involved? How many employees? It sounds like two additional employees. What materials are stored there? Well, that's enough for starters.
Yes. Our vehicles only, my, my personal, I mean, sorry, my work truck and my wife's personal vehicle. We don't have a lot of traffic. Wouldn't have clients come and visit at the office. As for materials, we don't store a lot of materials. We only store like maybe some leftover shingles and nails and stuff like that that will be stored at the back garage.
Are any of the, excuse me, may I speak, Madam Chair?
Sorry, yep.
Call up on Leslie's. I'm sorry, Leslie, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead.
Are there any combustible materials or any volatile materials stored on the premises?
Yeah.
Leslie, did you have any additional questions?
Um, so there were no vehicles other than your own truck?
In the morning will be just one of my employees vehicle. He works at the office, but that's pretty much it. And sometime when my other guy comes and grab like some nails or shingles, but he will become and goes out right away.
So where does your employee park if he?
He parks inside, like in the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And does any actual construction go on on the premises?
No.
Okay. Yeah, any other questions? John or Peter, Brad? Oh, yeah, Brad, I see your hand up.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Vice Chair. I have several questions that I'd like to ask. If it would be all right.
Yep, go right ahead.
Mr. Garcia, what is the scope of your business? Are you just a roofing contractor or do you do other things as well?
Do all the things.
Can you explain what those things are?
Yes, we're a small general contracting meeting that will do like bathroom remodels, siding, painting, roofing, decks, stuff like that. Pretty much home renovations.
Oh, how many, how many employees do you have?
In the office and the whole company.
In the whole company?
The four, got three at the office, two supervisors and three crews. Yeah, total like 10 employees.
Okay, and of those 10 employees, how many of them ever come to your, to your, your, your home-based business site?
Only two.
Only two? So no one else ever shows up?
No.
Okay, so so how many, how many vehicles, commercial vehicles do you own? Does your company own?
Three.
Three, and can you tell me what those are?
That's my work truck with a tundra. We, and then Angel keeps two of his, his property, which is a van transit and a 350 truck.
But you said an F-350, is that, is that a dump truck?
Yeah, it's more dump truck, yeah.
Dump truck. Okay, so what do you, what do you do with the dump truck?
We just use it for small projects, but we keep that one on Angel's property because that's the one he drives the most.
Okay, and does that ever, does that ever come to your site?
Um, not really.
Not really? What is, not really?
It's only when we need to pick up materials, like if we have like, we need some nails or some shingles that we have here or small stuff like that.
Okay, because I've seen your, I've seen that vehicle parked around the area. I've seen it in your driveway on the weekends. And I've seen it because I live nearby and I drive by and walk by bicycle by and I've seen, I've seen your site. So I'm just, I'm wondering what it is that where it is that you, you park these things.
Yeah, so like, like I say, he drive, Angel drive that one. And sometimes he drop it here on weekends, but he takes another vehicle and sometimes he keep both.
So you don't have any employees that ever park on the street?
When they, we do, we do park the van or the truck like for a few hours on the street, but never, never overnight.
Okay. So where does everybody meet in the morning when you have a job, a roofing job?
Yeah, so they go straight to the sites. To the, to the client's property.
Okay, and so most of the materials are dropped off at the site?
That is correct.
Okay, and you have a dumpster? You have a dumpster on that site?
That is correct.
Okay, what, what do you do with extra debris that might not make it into the dumpster? And if you have to go back or you have a small job and you're picking up? Is that what you use the pickup truck for?
That is correct. Yes, and we use two different dumps. We use one in the Hudson and one in Hyde Park.
Okay, and so do you, do you ever store any of that construction debris on, on your site?
No.
No, okay. So could you tell me again what it is that you, that you do keep on site?
We keep like leftover shingles, like small bundles of shingles because every, every bundle come was like, I will say like 30 pieces. And we keep this, those for repairs when a full bundles and full stuff that we can return, we return it to the supplier. And then maybe like small pieces of deck and boards that we store or like PVC trim, but not a lot.
Okay, so basically you, any leftovers, you store them on site and then you, then you use them. You either return them or you use them again. Is that right?
Yeah, if they're usable, yes.
And where do you store those?
Inside my, my, my garage.
Okay, you store them inside. Do you store anything outside?
Not really.
Can I just, sorry, Brad, just to interrupt for one second. Can I just remind everyone to please mute if you're not speaking? Thank you.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have a dumpster on your site on Concord Street?
I don't.
Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and you only park two vehicles? Or three vehicles, business-related vehicles? You park three business-related vehicles? How many, can you tell me how many you park, business-related vehicles you park in your, on your site?
Two. And sometimes, yeah, two. But as of right now, I have two vehicles.
Okay, and how many parking spots do you have on site? It looks like you have room for quite a few vehicles.
Yeah, this, yeah, the parking, the parking is kind of big on this property.
How many vehicles would you say you could park there?
How big I can park here?
Yeah.
I will say clearly, I mean, like at least eight, if you organize them pretty well, yeah.
Okay, so, so basically with eight vehicles, there's really no reason for you to ever need to park on the street anywhere. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so you said that you only have one, you only have one commercial vehicle that you, that ever parks there overnight? Is that, is that parking in your driveway or is there room to put a commercial vehicle in perhaps near garage, one of your garage spaces?
So you're saying that if I have a space inside the garage?
Yeah, you have a space inside a garage where you can park a vehicle?
Yes, I have. I can, yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's the vehicle that you use for, because you have two, you have two buildings and one of them has, I believe one of them has two bays. Is that correct? And one of them is a single, a single garage, right? And the one that's in the back, can you, can you fit one of your commercial vehicles in there?
Can I fit one, sorry?
Can you fit any of your commercial vehicles in there?
Yes, my, my small van, yeah, my little van.
Oh, your small man, okay.
Yeah, my, my wife's personal car.
Okay, so, so you use, so you use that space for personal use as well?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. So you're saying that none of your, that only two of your employees ever show up on site? So how do, how do you do your payroll? Do you distribute checks to them on site, at the site, job site, or does anybody come to your site to pay?
I give all the checks to Angel and he will distribute it to, to the job site, correct?
Okay, all right. Good. Um, I might have a question about your, your vehicle, some of your, your commercial vehicles that you had. You said you have an F-350 pickup or it's a dump truck, is that right? Is that a, is that a diesel truck?
Gas. We only use gas.
It's a gas, okay. And does it have, does it have backup sirens?
It does. That's why we don't keep that one here. It's rare when we have it here. I probably, since I bought it, probably have, have it here like two eyes, I think, only for when it snows, but that was only in snow.
Okay. So do you, is this a, is this job, this, your business that you do, is this year-round? Do you do roofing in the winter time as well?
Yes.
Okay. Great, great of you.
Yeah.
Um, do you have any accessory vehicles? Maybe that's quite the right word. Do you have any trailers or things like that that you pull with, with any of your trucks?
No.
No, you don't, okay. And you said that, where do you store all of your, your tools and your ladders and things like that?
I keep, I have most of them on top of the, one of the vans and I don't have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of ladders, to be honest.
Okay. But you said you had three, three crews, all right, roofing crews? They're all the roofing crews, is that what they are?
Some of them, no, they're not all roofing, roofing crews. There's, there's one roofing crew and all like inside painters, stuff like that.
Okay, so, but is all their, where's all their equipment stored?
I'm sorry?
Where's all of their equipment stored?
In the vans.
Oh, in, in their vans. Oh, so they, they have, they have their own vans, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they, they drive their own vans, yeah.
Okay, so are these, are these direct employers or these subcontractors?
Some, some of them are direct employees, some of them are subcontractors. Depends how busy we are.
Okay. So, um, tell me about your particular property, the you, it looks like your garages that are in the back have two bays and it looks like there's a second floor on the back building. What, what do you, is that a finished area up there?
No.
No, so, so what, what do you do with it?
Well, right now, pretty much nothing. It's empty it. That was another thing that I was, was want to try to file for later on to see if I could kind of make it like, like a family room and stuff like, so I can get better use of it. But as of right now, there's, there's, there's not finished. It's not finished in there.
Okay, because I was wondering what you were doing with it because I saw a ladder stuck in the side window going up the second floor. I'm just wondering what you were, what you were doing with that up there.
I think, I think, I think Angel put that ladder over there. He never took it down.
Okay, so, but that doesn't, it doesn't stay there overnight? Usually?
I will check. I guess I'm to took it down, but I'm not sure if it's there. I'll check.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious to see if you, if your equipment that you say that you store doesn't stay out in your yard. I'm just, that's why I was asking.
Okay, yeah, I have like one big ladder that it's really hard, heavy to move there and that one that you see on top. But I, he went to look at the leak we have in the garage.
Okay. I noticed that you have a lot of fencing in your, around your yard. It looks like you've got fences all the way around your yard except for a section in the front of your house or between your house and your side fence. Is that, is your fencing complete all the way around?
Yeah, it's, yes, all completely all around. I mean, I was like that when I, when I bought the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, oh, I noticed also you don't, you don't have any signs in front of your house that have, for your business and in front of your house or on the front of your house. But you can certainly see into your backyard and see your commercial vehicles from the street and from your sidewalk. Because it looks like there's about a 12-foot section of fencing or screening, which is not there, which is missing. That's something that you're interested in, in trying to do or interested in doing is putting up some screening?
Were you facing the house on the left?
Yes, facing your house on the left.
Yeah, you, there used to be like some sort of green fence before, but we removed it because we were planning to do on front of the house, the little, the small fence on the front so we can keep our dog inside the property. But yeah, we're planning to do that this year, but I don't know if it's gonna happen.
Or, so are you looking at putting in a, a fence that matches the side fences, which is a high fence, which would block after screening, would block the, the view of your commercial vehicles that you park in your, your backyard?
I wasn't planning to do that, but if necessary, yeah, we definitely can do that.
Okay. Let me, let me just summarize what, what I've, what I've, insofar as questions I've heard about your business so far. You have more than one commercial vehicle, but you only park one on your property overnight? Is that correct?
I park, yeah, I park my, my tundra, my wife's car and a small van sometimes. Now I think I have two here.
Okay, but that's in terms of your commercial vehicles is what I'm talking about. Okay, and and you have direct and subcontractors working for you. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But they don't come to your house? Only two direct employees that come to your house?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. If needed, though, and the office in the morning is only my wife Kathleen and Paul, which is my other office guy that comes from, he comes from Friday so Monday to Friday. The other guy is, they don't, they don't come to the, to the office. It's really rare when they come. But they come, will come for five minutes and will be gone.
Okay, and you don't, you don't have any customers that come to your property?
No, it's, it's rare. I mean, since I have my office here, it's maybe one or two came to drop off a check, but that's it.
Okay, but they normally don't come to me at your house and, and you don't go over projects with them, okay?
Nope.
Okay, and do you do any repairs, manufacture or craft anything at that property that you work at?
Nope.
That your business is at, okay? And you, and you've already said that you don't have a dumpster on your property?
That is correct.
Right, and you store all of your equipment inside the garage areas or your storage area, your building and not outside in your yard?
Correct.
Is that right? And your leftover materials that you work stays, stores inside your property as well until you use them or you return them? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Sure. And you have no signs or anything out in front of your house, business signs or anything like that? And you also have no screening or fencing on the left side of your house? So people can see from the street into your house. I'm just summarizing this so, so we're, so everybody understands the answer to all my questions that I asked. All right. I, that's, that's all the questions that I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. John or Peter or Leslie, I see your hand.
Yeah, maybe I already asked this. Are there things like paint or no cans of gas for power equipment stored on the property?
There, here, there's still like all cans of paint that I have in, I think something like whoever lives here before, I think they have like a paint trade shop here. They left a lot of cans and I haven't got a chance to, to throw them, you know, have to put some liquid to carve them out and then to send it to the paint stores that they can dispose it correctly. But as of right now, they're probably like really old. But yeah, but there is still some cans inside that are really old cans.
Okay, and how about gasoline for any?
Gasoline.
Equipment? No, okay.
See, John or Peter, do you have any questions? Anything to add?
I have one question.
Sorry.
So you said you'd be willing to fence it in to make it kind of cover the commercial vehicles for your neighbors?
Yes, I can definitely do that, absolutely.
Okay. And would it be possible for any employees that do come to the site for you to just have them always park in your driveway instead of the street to avoid bothering any neighbors in the area?
Yes, I don't, I don't, I don't think they park on the, if you mean like on the side where my house is on sidewalk. I don't think, I never, I haven't seen them park there. I know they do park on the Brook Street for a couple of minutes or I, because there is some parking allowance there. I don't know for commercial, but, but we, we sometimes park our truck on, on Brook Street just for a couple of hours and then we'll remove them.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter. Brad, you did a great job with questions. You definitely took everything I had, got those into the record or asked them already, so thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board before we move on to the next? Okay. All right, so at this point, I think we could open the hearing to public comment. I just have a quick procedural question for Bill. I see we received two comment letters and I see that those individuals happen to be in attendance. Should they be read into the record now or is it something they can do if they choose? Does it matter?
I don't think it matters as long as they're entered in the record. There, you know, just for clarity's sake, if we, we mentioned that, you know, that we received letters and who they're from and we can either read them in or if the individuals want to go ahead and speak, just so we get, we get all the questions on the record. A lot of them, Brad really hit a lot there. And but I would defer to the individuals. Since we have them both here, I didn't expect one and I wasn't sure if the other one was coming, so we have, it's always good to have live ones.
All right, well, we'll open it up to the public. I'll start, but we did receive two letters as I just noted. I'll start with those two letters and those individuals given the option to either read their letter into the record or provide additional comments or questions in addition to that. So the first letter that we received was from Bill Cranshaw, Mockingbird Lane, dated March 28th. Bill, do you have a preference? I could read your letter to get into the record or do you have other?
Um, thank you. I think the first question I had on the letter was covered in the earlier discussion, but I would appreciate some clarity on the second question about the size of the fleet and the sub-question about whether it's all the vehicles are registered in Maynard, but the, the number of vehicles I'm a little confused on because I kept hearing three, but it's really at least four, so I just want to clarify that.
Sure, so, Christian, I think, can you provide some clarity on that? I think the question was the, on the number of vehicles and then seeking the, on the number of vehicles and then seeking a further clarification as to whether they're all registered as being garaged in the town of Maynard. And I think you may be muted if you're responding now.
Yeah, sorry about that, sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, so I do have four. Um, sometimes I got two vehicles, two commercial vehicles here, not all the time. And Angel keeps to his property, where he lives, he lives in a commercial property. That he is allowed to have vehicles. Here in Maynard, we only have one commercial, sometimes two commercial, once in a while, but it does really, really not the case. As of right now, I think I have two. Does he drop off one?
Thank you. And Bill, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess so, although frankly, I see three of them there all, most of the time. But um, could we get the answer to whether they're registered as garage in Maynard?
Sure, Christian, I think you said, said that they were in Maynard, but can you clarify that?
Well, clarify, meaning that if the vehicle registering Maynard?
Yes, yep. Or where their reg, registered place of garaging is, if they're registered in Maynard or another town.
Oh, yeah, I have, yeah, they're all registering Maynard, but I don't keep all them. Like I said, they Angel drives too, because he have, he have to, he, he does dump, dump, dump truck and one transit. So when we don't need the dump truck, he keep it at his property and he use the transit, because that's how he transport himself. Cause he doesn't come in the morning to the office. He goes straight out to the sites.
Thank you. And the second letter that we received was from Paul Schneider. I'm hoping I didn't just butcher your last name. It's embarrassing. I don't know how to pronounce it. But Paul, could be the same option, I think, uh, if you would like to read your letter into the record? Or if you feel it's been addressed, if there are any other questions you'd like to, to ask?
Yeah, I appreciate the chance. Um, I think most of my questions were answered by Brad in his uh discussion. The one thing I am confused by though, is I go by the house, I see typically three trucks parked in his yard. Um, and Sunday morning, there were, there were three there Saturday night and there were three there Sunday night. And I believe there's three there now. And Sunday morning, when uh the dump truck backed out before noon time, it's, you know, a little bit disheartening hearing that backup beeper going. And so I, I like clarification as to what the petitioner is considering a commercial vehicle, if there's typically three there at his house.
Thank you, Paul. Christian, can you clarify that? I also thought that.
So, yeah, so about, about the beeping, keep in mind that there is all the truck at six or six fifteen every morning that's backing out somewhere else. That's not my truck. So that's total not my truck. You guys, you guys can hear that and, and every morning, okay? Sunday, this Sunday, yes, Angel came around, yeah, I think twelve, I can check my text when he's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop by because he came to pick up his check. And I think he, um, I don't, I don't remember if he dropped off the, the, that truck or he, or he took it from the property, but he came to, to pick up his check on Sunday. Yeah, he probably buck it out. And so you, they hear the beeping at twelve P M, something like twelve between twelve and one. But in the morning, that's not us. That's somebody else that has a beeping truck in the morning. So you got, that, that, that sounds comes from around Brook Street. So you guys gotta keep an eye on that one. That's, that's, I mean, I'm not complaining about him. I'm just saying that it's not me, okay?
Thank you. And Paul, does that, was that your, the only question you had or was there anything else?
Yeah, and I, the number of vehicles with the very, very distinct uh red and black and white labeling on it. Uh, I'm seeing three trucks there consistently. And yet he is saying that there is maybe one or two, and I'm just curious what he considers a commercial truck.
Okay, I mean, I can, I can definitely, I mean, if, if the vehicles are, are the problem and, and this to get the the proof of the trade shop, I can have, I can just keep my personal cars in here. I can, I can go somewhere else with the vehicles. That's not a, that's not a big deal for me. That's the disturbing of the neighbors. I, I can, I can definitely do that, if that's the problem.
Thank you, Christian. Just uh
Madam Chair may make one point?
Yep. Please go ahead, right ahead.
Yeah, um, so far as the vehicles, assuming it's under twenty-five thousand uh pounds of gross vehicle weight. The applicant or anybody in town is, uh, may keep one commercial vehicle overnight on their property. Anything more than that requires a special permit.
More than, I'm sorry, how, how many, how, how many pounds?
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, we don't have any, any truck that, that big.
Right, one, right. And um additional vehicles would require a special permit. But the, uh, just to be clear, that is uh, that entitled under current zoning bylaws.
Thank you, Bill. And just to follow up on that, Christian, I think I heard you say that you would be open to parking your commercial vehicles elsewhere. I think Bill was noting that the zoning pile does allow one as long as it's under that weight limit, uh, by right.
So that, that's a question. So, so he's on the twenty-five thousand pounds. So it might, one, one of my vehicles like nine thousand pounds. So how many vehicles can I park overnight? If, if it is under that? So do I have to park? So let's say if I have two vehicles that one is nine thousand pounds and the other one is like five thousand pounds, so I still allowed to park two?
No, it's, it's one vehicle uh, up to that overnight uh outside. And, and that's one thing, the bylaw is uh pretty clear on that part. So uh, anybody to do that.
Okay, but can I, can I park inside the garage?
If you park and vehicles are inside the garage, um, the bylaw specifically says that vehicles outside. So if a vehicle was, was parked inside the garage, uh, that would be, um, that would not be counted. If it was outside of the garage, it would be a, a code enforcement issue. And um, it, it could either be a, a zoning bylaw um violation where the building commissioner ends up enforcing a penalty for that. Or the, this board or um whoever issues the uh special permit uh ultimately would be uh able to uh rescind the permit. So, to be clear, one vehicle under twenty-five thousand pounds um is entitled. Everybody's entitled to have that one vehicle. Uh, anything else is not uh allowed to be outside overnight without the special permits of the uh, in this case, is zoning board.
Right, so does anyone else from the general public want to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the request? I just ask that you share your, raise your hand. I'll call on you by hands and then please state your name and address. And I see uh Bill's hand up and then we'll jump to Linda following Bill.
Uh, thank you. I would just like clarification of the last point that Bill Nems was talking about is parking in the garage? Because I noticed that the little transit van is often parked partially in the garage and probably can't get in, can't have the door closed because of those ladders and stuff. Does that count as in the garage for number of cars you can have overnight?
I think you're muted.
Oh, that was a great answer, I guess, too. Uh, it, um, no, this is a question, Bill. It, it, I'm reading the um the definition says vehicles outside, so that would have to be the board's discretion, I would say. But clearly, a vehicle outside means something that's not contained. I mean, to me, it's the spirit of the the bylaw. So I, my opinion is it's half in, half out. You know, it's not contained. However, if it was in and, and closed in, it would not be considered um it would not count against the total count, in my opinion. And I think a lot of that, um, well, it would be up to the board discretion. I think that would be uh what the spirit of its uh specific bylaw is. Does that make sense, Bill?
Yes, thank you.
Linda?
Thank you. Um could um, i- i- is, is the company registered in Maynard? I understand that the vehicles are registered, but is the company itself registered in the town of Maynard? With the town of Maynard?
Yes.
Wait, sorry, before you keep going, this is Julia, the assistant town planner. Do you just mind stating your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Lady Taylor, uh, Cham, fourteen Chandler Street. Thanks for the reminder, Julia.
Keeping me on my toes, Julia.
So I'm sorry, was, was the answer yes?
When you said register that the address, I mean, like, the company is registered, we're registered through our attorney and everything. So I mean, we got, yeah, we do got mails from the business to, to, to the twenty-seven Congresses. So I'm assuming that is registered in Maynard. If that's, if that's why you asked.
Uh, I, yeah, that is what I asked. I guess I'd like to know that that was confirmed with the town. And the other question, uh, thank you. The other question is, um can someone in, in planning maybe can just verify that the garage is is on this, is part of this property? The, the property card is a little confusing for me to, to read. So I, I'm just asking for confirmation.
It is one property.
No, I, I understand it's one property, the building. Is the garage actually included? Is it acknowledged as a building on the property card? If you
Oh, I, I, the property card, the, the assessors, I, I can't speak to that at the moment. I'd have to research that.
Okay, so I think.
Hi, this is Julia. Um, so I know from looking back at that, that it, it is considered a, a non-conforming structure because of uh where it was built and um it's uh distant from the edge of the property line. And I know that we have a survey and, and I think some of our documents, when we were going uh way back into the paper documents that I can provide for the record too.
Okay, if, if that can just be confirmed, that, I think that, that would be helpful. Thank you. It, the, the outline on the property card of the, the outline of the buildings doesn't seem to match the actual configuration when you see it, so.
And any, yeah, any buildings, I will warn everyone, um, all, all the buildings if on, online, sometimes they are they are not correct. So we are, we are working on trying to change that, but I will confirm to make sure that everything is um is on the property.
I would say that, looking at the survey as we speak, Linda, um, and actually wanted to share. You know, we would be, we would have to go with the surveyors uh plot plan over the um what's on the assessor's website. And here's what we have. Here we go. Can, can everybody see that?
Yes.
So, Ari, you know, and, and we have to defer to the surveyor in this case.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Linda. I see a hand uh with the initials E R. Can you please introduce yourself and note your address?
Hi, it's Erica Michelle Rappaport, twenty-nine Concord Street.
Thank you.
Um, we just have um more uh personal uh concerns and statement. Given context, um, we're twenty-nine Congress Street, we've lived here for twenty-one years. And our backyard outdoor living space of butts are fencing, of butts, um, the said property's paved backyard. And that space is used for personal parking, um, but also more than one business labeled truck, including a dump truck which does beep in reverse. Um, and as recently as March sixteenth at six twenty-eight A M, I have a photo of it with lights on, beeping, and it woke us up, um, leaving the property. And that is not just a one-time um occurrence. It happens often. There can be daily movement in and out of the property, including on weekends um, of employees and multiple business labeled trucks. Um, there's loading and offloading of roofing and construction materials and, including construction trash that sometimes sits in that said dump truck for multiple days. We have lived here, like I said, for twenty-one years and we're not looking to um have any issue with anybody running a business from their home. Um, we just want it not to outwardly impact our neighborhood. More so for our quality of life and the quality of life of our neighbors. Um, we want to be able to enjoy our home and our outdoor space without a daily impact of both visual and noises of a business. And all those activities can be seen and heard from the windows of our home as well as standing in our backyard. We worry about how it affects our property value and how it would impact the sale of our home if we ever did decide to sell the house. And a, a lot of our questions have already been answered, but we just felt uh important to state how are, we, we feel about um the scenario.
If I can add, I'm wondering how many of the planning boards have actually visited the property to actually see? The, our address next to that house. We have a six-foot fence. Um, we have a few trees that kind of block the back corner of the outside garage building, but the rest, like, um, was stated earlier. We can see all the time. And if there's context needed, I'm happy to share. Um, you know, ever since I got the notice, I took a few photos. I'm happy to share. But I think it sounds like some of the planning board has already seen the location, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Yep, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name for E R. It was
Yeah, it's Erica Michelle Rappaport.
Rappaport, uh, thank you. Um, it sounds to me like the uh instances uh that you cited were all uh the, vehicle related. That and the offloading, what you thought was offloading of debris. Is that correct?
Um, it's, it's noise. It's, you know, the moving of materials in and out. It's employees visiting during the day, on weekends, at random. I mean, we're living our lives, so we're not paying attention to who's coming and going. And, you know, if it's the same person we saw yesterday or two days ago, it's, it's noise. It's business noise.
It's visual.
It, it's the visual of it, you know, looking out my window. And I see five trucks sitting in the back of their yard and ladders on uh the roof and staging material in the back, um, instead of just looking out and seeing my yard. And noise of, you know, beeping trucks at six-thirty in the morning.
Thank you.
May I, yes, so you're right, this weekend, no, this one last weekend, I had the dump truck here to clean up all the stuff that, because this house when I bought it, had like a lot of debris inside and outside. I haven't got a chance to clean it up. And you probably took a photo of that. Like I said, beeping at six A M in the morning every day, that's not us. Like I said, check somebody else on Brook Street or close by us, they have a dump truck every morning beeping. I mean, yes, we do it once in a while. We don't do it every day. Okay, um, yeah, there's ladder on the roof. Like I said, Angel was checking out for the, for the leak and he left the ladder there. And also, we are, the back of the garage, um, I don't know one number of the house, the houses on the, on the same call, the garage is light blue. They came and they said, oh, there's, there is some insulation of your garage falling down. Can you close that? Because it was missing a piece of soffit. So yeah, so that time the guys came and put a piece of fish eye and soffit for, for that side of the garage. That is right. There's not, there's not like construction going on here. So hopefully you're not thinking when we, when I cut my lawn. So hopefully you're not thinking when we, when I cut my lawn or when I do some leap low and that's considered that as well. Because that's part of personal business.
E R, Eric, is that, do you have any additional questions? I see our hands still up.
Let me turn that off you. Um, other than that, you know, like I said, the one, we see if there's, if the board had actually see the physical location. If you need to see anything, I'm happy to share. Otherwise, I think we've covered our concerns.
Thank you. Yes, I think it sounded like a few board members were fairly familiar with the site, but I, I appreciate that offer. And Bill, I see your hand up. Is that something, is that from before or is that additional statement or comment?
Uh, it's a new one and I promise.
No, no, go right ahead. Didn't mean to imply that.
Um, I was just trying to clarify whether the, the application is, is authorized for twenty-four seven, um, activity of the office building on the site? Or is it requesting certain days and certain hours for that outside activity?
Uh, no, this is, I mean, like I said, my wife Kathleen, she works on Saturday from eight to twelve P M. I mean, I'm the owner, so I work pretty much twenty-four seven. But, uh, but it's either inside my house, inside my office. I mean, if you guys see my, my work truck coming out on Sundays, I mean, because my wife's gonna use her personal car and I'm gonna use my truck, because I also use that as a personal truck. So you're probably gonna see it on the Sunday, living around, maybe like in the morning, afternoons, because I play, I also play sports. And I, and I have to, my wife doesn't like to come sometimes, so, so she need the car. And I take my truck to do my personal things as well.
Christian, if I could just ask a follow-up and forgive me, I'm not very familiar with this business, but does it have traditional, do you have traditional business hours or? Or would you be working?
Yeah, so it's, um, it's, it's, I mean, it's Monday to Saturdays. I, like I said, I work pretty much Mondays, Monday through Sunday, but that doesn't mean I'm gonna be coming out with dump truck. Angel only works Monday through Saturdays because he's the supervisor. But like I said, he doesn't come to the office, really rare when he comes to the, to the office to pick up something or to pick up checks or drop off checks, you know? And, but that he will be here like for, for ten minutes, for an hour, but not more than that.
And do those activities usually start around like seven in the morning? Or is it, is it earlier? Is it too variable to place an ending and starting time at?
Angel sometimes, yeah, Angel sometimes stop by like around seven thirty, because it's thirty minutes from where he lives. I wake up at five, so sometime I go to work at six. So that's when they see either my van or my truck pulling out the driveway. But that's, that's pretty much it. And I, and I, and I think as a construction, if I work for the construction company, either if I work for a big company, I will, they definitely gonna give me a, a, a company truck to be used. So that's why I'm trying to explain that my, my tundra on Sundays is my personal truck, even though it has that company logos and everything, but that's what I use as a person on Sundays. And that doesn't have any beeping. It is a gas, it is a brand new truck, so it's kind of like driving a, a small car. Doesn't make no noise at all.
And Linda, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. Could I just ask for clarification? Who, who is Angel?
He's one of my supervisors.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you won't.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to ask a question or provide any comments? Okay. Yep, Paul?
Yeah, I just been reading through the zoning bylaws. And I have a question on whether this is a trade shop application or a commercial business application? Because a trade shop is for an individual. And a commercial business is simply a commercial business.
Bill, is that something you can provide any input on?
The, um, yeah, I have to defer in this case to the, uh, zoning commissioner, building commissioner. He's determined that it is a trade shop. In the case of a trade shop, it doesn't specify if there are employees or not. A home occupation does, but a trade shop, uh, doesn't. However, it is clear that it is, um, a, a subordinate use. So what would be, um, in this case, that would be something that the board, um, would have the, um, the leeway to condition however they thought appropriate or, uh, address, but, um.
Bill, could I add?
Yeah.
So I think it also has to do with, with customer base, correct? So, uh, that there, a trade shop, uh, unless that's how we were, we were interpreting. I have to be careful what I say, because there's what it, it's, there's what it says, and then that's how we interpret the bylaw. But know that one of the things that we are, had been talking about with trade shops is that they, they don't have a, a customer base coming in and out.
I think that's accurate.
Okay. Versus, versus a commercial business. But I, I don't know if that's specified in the zoning bylaw, but I think that's one way that we were interpreting.
Well, if it's a commercial business and that's the primary use, it's not permitted in this, in the residential, um, districts. In this case, um, it, it, it's, has to be a subordinate use.
Yeah, the, the primary use would have to be living.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill and Julia. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Right, hearing none. Oh, was that, is that someone about to say something? I don't want to, yep. Bryce, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm not an immediate butter, but I was on the list of butter, so like one property removed. And from my viewpoint, I just wanted to state that I have no problem, uh, with this enterprise at all. There's not a visual problem, there's not a noise problem, but I am basically one property removed. So I'm, I'm not, it's not as if I were neck, completely next door, which is of course a different consideration. But from my standpoint, it's not a problem. And I, I think it's great that somebody can operate a business out of his house. So I would, from my viewpoint, at least support it.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay. Right, hearing no one, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Close, uh, public comment.
Public comment. Thank you, Bill.
At the hearing, yeah, yes.
Okay, I make a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Leslie. Do we have a second? John, I saw your hand first. All right. At this time, well, I think we need to do, do we need to roll call vote, vote?
Yes, you should. It, it's good, it's good practice.
Okay.
Nothing else for the minutes.
All right, uh, Leslie?
Well, are we not gonna discuss it?
Oh, am I getting ahead of myself?
I don't know.
You're just closing the public portion of the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
And now you're, be open to deliberation, but once it was closed, no new information would be entertained. There would be clarifications allowed if the board had, uh, clarifications of any of the, um, speakers or, um, applicants.
Can I, can I say something before, um, before you guys close this? Um, I just want to ask, I mean, is, is the, the problem is the trucks? Or, I mean, I see some people saying something about the vehicles. I mean, I would like to that clarify, because I'm not here to make any, any trouble. I'm just here to try to make everything right. You know, it's a small business and we will love to support. I know there's other businesses around this area that I, that I see myself, but, and I'm really proud of that. They also running their business because they could also save some money on the commercial property. By renting commercial property, that's really, really expensive. And, I mean, for whoever are here, if I have caused any trouble, any noise in the morning, I, I, I really apologize and I wish I wouldn't, um, before, so that way I would have stopped that. That's pretty much I have, all I have to say.
So at this point, I think we'll take that, uh, motion to close the public comment. I think Leslie will start, do the roll call vote, starting with you.
Uh, yes.
That's okay, Brad? Yes, John? Did I miss you, John? Oh, I see your hand, okay. Uh, Peter? Yeah, okay, and myself, um, I also vote for that, so that's a unanimous vote. Uh, so at this time, I think we'll open it up to deliberations by the board. So I think we've heard a lot today. I'm just going to pull up in the staff report. I mean, which outlines the items we need to consider. I think, when granting a special permit, we would need to make a finding that the adverse effects of the proposed use would not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood and view of the characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to the site. And our, our determination must include consideration of each of the following, and that's the social, economic or community needs which are served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, adequacy of utilities and other public services, neighborhood character and social structures, impacts on the natural environment and potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment. So with that context, I think we'll open the floor to deliberations. I'd be interested in hearing what the board thinks in terms of of those criteria, whether any conditions may be appropriate to address them or your general thoughts. Yep, Brad?
Thank you, Brad, Chair. I just wanted to make a, a general comment about, um, about businesses in residential areas. I think because this business is in a, uh, general residential area district. Um, and it's not in the downtown business, a commercial area or the overlay district. I find properly. I think that the, uh, people and the residents of the neighborhoods, um, have to have a higher level or of, uh, pride enjoyment, their properties. And people that live, uh, residents that live in those other areas. Um, so I think that that'd be something that we should consider, um, when we make our decision, um, tonight. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Brad. Um, not to put you on the spot, but over there, any, I think we've heard today some, some concerns regarding screening and potential noise concerns and vehicle parking. Uh, are there any conditions that you might consider or recommend?
Oh, yeah, I can think of all sorts of, uh, recommend. First of all, uh, Mr. Garcia has, did say that, um, he would be happy to make sure that there's no commercial vehicles on this property, parked on that property. And, um, I think we should follow up with that and, and ask him to not do that. It's apparent that the, um, F three fifty pickup truck, or I'm sorry, dump truck is used to carry trash and also has the backup. It seems to be a big, for neighbors and everyone else, current. Also, there's parking, they seem to be parking all over the streets. He says there's parking for vehicles at his house. Um, so I think that there should be no reason why he wouldn't park everybody on the street. I mean, uh, no, that nobody should park on the street for, for minutes or an hour or anything else. Also, um, keeping, um, making sure that all the tools and everything are not at all in his yard, what is a great idea, um, his neighbors can see into his yard. And, and other than, other than seeing a lot of cars and vehicles parked there, they shouldn't have to be able to be looking at his trash and things like that, that trash or tool, like that. Adding the fencing to the side of the house, I think is paramount. If, if he had that fencing, six-foot-high fencing that matched the rest of the house, I don't think anybody would, from the street, would even notice that he's had a business going on. You know, somebody that's walking by the street, uh, of course, uh, we find out that there's, that he's parking on the street and parking on the side streets and everything like that, which is causing some concern, um, to people. So maybe we should get rid of, um, you know, the commercial vehicles coming to the house.
Sorry, you say?
Get the signs up. I mean, and get the fencing up.
Thanks, Brad. Um, just to summarize, I've heard so far, you've mentioned in terms of potential conditions that we should consider. No commercial vehicles parking outside on the property, no street parking. Having storage of commercial construction equipment or debris is remain inside. And some, adding some additional screening to the left side of the house to fill that gap that's currently there.
Yeah, I mean, I could, can definitely do that. I mean, that, I have not a problem. One, one more, one other thing now that you guys also commenting on, on vehicles parked on the street. Can we, I mean, on Brook Street, that it seems that there's parking for cars. I see a lot of cars parked there. I see a lot of commercial trucks parked there. They don't have business logos, but they have commercial plates. However, on Concord Street, there's not, there's no, uh, street park for neither commercial or residential vehicles. And I'm not complaining to, just to clarify this, but I just want to make sure that if they're gonna, that gonna apply to me. I mean, I think we should apply that to every single one. You know, because I'm, like I said, I'm trying to make everything right with the town, with the city. I'm trying to make it live in here. But if I have to pay for, for a commercial, um, building, I will. I will definitely do so, you know? But now I'm probably gonna start doing the same thing that they are doing to me. Because I don't think, to be honest with you, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm a bad person. I'm not a bad person at all. I'm just trying to make everything right. It's, it's like, if you tell me like, don't park cars there, I will definitely not park the cars here, to be honest with you.
I mean. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Garcia. So I think, um, understood, what we're here is to discuss tonight is just the, the request that's in front of us, which is, uh, the request you brought to us. So we can't necessarily open any other, um, uses or discuss any of the other businesses or trade operations around you. So we are here just to discuss yours, but I appreciate that clarification. Um, I think I saw a hand. Peter, I think your hand was first and then John, or your hand was up earlier. I don't know.
John can go.
Okay. Oh, John, I don't think we can hear you. Unless it's just me. No. I think there might be a dial-in number if you want to try dialing in and we can come back to you.
You could also type it in the chat.
Or, yeah, or type it in the chat. That's a good suggestion. Thank you, Julia.
And could I ask a question on, um, the conditions? So just, uh, with, when it comes to no commercial vehicles on site, we would still allow the one commercial vehicle that he has by right?
Thank you.
I, I would have a, an issue with that. Um, if it's, if it happens to be the pickup truck, I'm, I'm sorry, the dump truck that makes a lot of noise when it packs up and has a lot of debris, stored for, for periods of time, I think that that one should, um.
I was thinking his commercial vehicle. So his personal vehicle is considered a, a commercial vehicle? So that, that's the one I was thinking of.
Okay, so this personal vehicle is a, um, he is a tundra pickup truck that has a lot of signage and everything on it. It's, it's obviously a commercial vehicle. That has a lot of signage and everything on it. It's it's obviously a commercial vehicle. But if he's allowed to have one vehicle.
Yeah, so that would be the only one vehicle that he would.
So you'd stipulate that one particular vehicle?
Yes.
We do that.
Yes.
That doesn't have a backup beeper.
That would be, that would be in the board's purview. That's what I was going to suggest is that. The the issue of the one commercial truck overnight is is in the, you know, covered in the bylaws. But it seems to me that the the backup, the noise generated is an issue. The debris in the in the bed of the truck or wherever it is is an issue. Those are all conditions that I believe would be. Within the board's purview to stipulate for a special permit.
Took just to dig into that a little further, Bill, regarding the backup alarm, hearing that as a concern raised by neighbors. And I know one of the items we could consider is noise. Could it be as straightforward as not? Is setting hours around the use of the backup alarm or could it be a prohibition?
That would be totally in the board's.
Okay.
Um, I think that in the case of a backup, you may have somebody that's that there are certain conditions for disabilities where there is a backup. Alarm contained or installed in the vehicle. And it's not, but in this case, you know, where it's just a question of of because of the size of the vehicle or the use of the vehicle. I think it would be reasonable for the board to stipulate a time as well. I mean, and and if the issue is. If if this simple, the simple fix would be just back in your driveway, so you know, if they're back up in the morning when you go out, but. I think all that is in the board's purview when they're considering a special permit.
To to clarify to you that the one that makes the noise is the dump truck that is not his own personal vehicle. So the one that he would be pulling in and out should should not have a backup noise on it. And I I would suggest also, like Bill said, not, we wouldn't want to put any sort of prohibition on the. Backup noises are there for a reason. So we want to make sure that they. We're not hindering any any other disabilities in that manner.
Thank you, Julia and Bill. So in terms of, I did hear noise or concerns expressed about the backup alarm, a few different. Potential solutions were just identified. There's, do members of the board have any thoughts or? Preferences on how to address that concern? Think I heard having the back end, potentially putting hours around it. Any other options or preference?
It would seem that. He has that one truck that doesn't have the backup. Alarm. That's his own truck. But it's a a business truck if I'm. Hearing this correctly. So that's the one that he can have by right. And then it seems like the dump truck with the alarm should have to be parked. Offsite.
And offsite meaning on Brook Street or somewhere else in Maynard where overnight parking is allowed.
Well, not.
Because then you're, then that is backing up in someone else's neighborhood.
Right.
Causing that, causing a nuisance.
Well, he can't park on the on Brook Street during winter month anyways.
And just to remind the the board when they're considering this. Trade shop, special permits at the time, they change down the road, but at the time are a one year renewal. If the board has conditions, they feel address or mitigate the potential issues. And it was not. Adherent to or something. Of course, as I I've said before, the board always has the. Option to, you know, rescind, but it's going to come back in front of the board a year. And certainly the butters will be in a better position than anybody to, you know, to relay anything. And the proper way to address. Any impacts that are in violation or not consistent with a special permit. That would be something where town halls notified and hopefully. You you know, a code enforcement order would be issued. So if there was a problem. We have something memorialized in the form of a special permit, what's allowed, what's not allowed. And all of a sudden, there's four vehicles overnight. Well, then we haven't, you know, it's a it's an issue. So that's a, that's an advantage right now with the the one year period.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else from any members of the board?
I think we might want to think about a restriction on. Times when things can be loaded into trucks, supplies, like not too early in the mornings. So it doesn't disturb any of the neighbors. Because if it's construction equipment and lumber, roof shingles, throwing that in the bed of a truck and a van or whatever, moving that is. It can be really loud and destructive. So I think there should be some sort of time when that's allowed. Not late at night, not super early in the morning. Because I'm sure neighbors with young kids don't want to have their kids woken up super early if it can be avoided. And I'm sure if it's set out in advance. I'm sure you can just have his crew come at certain times or plan it out to have the supplies loaded the night before. I'm sure this way.
It seems like most kids are up to go to school by seven thirty. And a lot of construction crews are already. At their sites by what, seven thirty or eight? But. I certainly wouldn't want. Them doing that on the weekends if they were my neighbors.
I mean, keep in mind that we don't load any materials on site. Everything that we install, it goes directly to the customer house. I can provide you with all the suppliers that we use. We don't, we don't carry any materials on site.
Okay, so the, so when your crews come, they don't back the truck up and just load a bunch of stuff in throughout the day. Everything just goes to the client site. You go there, the lumber is there and everything, and you're good to go. It's only like smaller materials that you get from like the garage, like nails, you know, roofing nails and things like that.
Yeah, so the cruise doesn't come to site. The only one that comes to site sometimes in the morning is Andrew, which is the supervisor. And when we load like small nails, it's because we have like an emergency repair or something like that, or repair that we have the materials in. In inside the shop that that we can use. So that's when we load little stuff, but we never, you're never gonna see it loading like. Bunches of shingles or a lot of stuff, because that goes directly to the customer.
Okay.
So I'm curious where the dump truck. Will not that I've not that it's our concern, but where the dump truck is going to park now that it's. We're not going, if we're not going to allow that vehicle because of the backup. And or he's only allowed one commercial vehicle and it's going to be the one that he also uses for personal. Matters. Where is the dump truck going to go?
I have all the properties that I can park to it, so. Yeah, that's, I mean, like I said, if 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 that truck is the problem, I will have, I don't, I will have that truck ever again here. But you're probably going to see it like maybe around sometimes ten AM, twelve AM, twelve PM, one PM, two PM. Because probably Angela's driving it and he just came to get something. And 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 you're still gonna hear that beep in the morning that is not us. Okay, so yeah, so if that truck is the problem, I'll I will have it here though, on my, on my house ever again. Overnight, we're bucking up early in the morning. Like I said, we probably bucked up this truck like maybe three times. On since I bought the truck, the truck is bringing you to the business. And you probably, if if there are complaints, no, yes, we we plow my house and we buck in and out like. As all the company does and it's not right. So that's when you probably gonna hear, but yeah, that the the problem with that truck, I won't have it.
Mr. Garcia, may I ask a question? Would the? Dump truck be parked at a commercial location overnight or outside of Maynard?
It'll be outside of Maynard. It won't be, it won't be in Maynard.
Do any members of the board have any other issues to note?
Can I just follow up on both questions? So you said that that the pickup, the dump truck would not be parked on site, but it would be parked outdoors in Maynard. But not at a commercial site. Where where would it be parked?
Uh, I didn't say it was gonna be parked in Maynard.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's what, I thought that's what your answer was to Bill.
I thought it was outside, I thought.
No, he asked if it was gonna be in Maynard, I said no.
Okay, but it's it's gonna be parked outside, but it's not gonna be parked outside in Maynard.
It will, I mean, unless we are doing work in in residential home in Maynard. I mean, I I think that's.
Well, I mean, overnight, overnight.
Oh, no, no, overnight. No, no, I mean, no, no, I'm not gonna park that truck in Maynard. My other properties are not in Maynard. But keep in mind that, like I said, you're probably gonna see if you're driving by like maybe in front, just because Angel is here. Drive the truck, but that truck is not gonna stay here for too long. Or if, because I'm planning to replace the windows and siding on my house, I'm gonna use that as a dumpster. This later in the future. So if you see it there, that's, that's when you're gonna see it, but you know, it's the overnight or. Or park here for like five hours. If that makes sense.
It would just be used as any commercial vehicle in a neighborhood is what you're saying. For certain operations, but you you understand the board's intention is to not have it stored. Overnight in Maynard in a residential area.
I, yes.
Right, that's what the, I mean, I think we can cut the chase and that's, that's what this is about.
You won't see that truck ever again here overnight parking in Maynard.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
And Mr. Garcia, if I could just ask, follow up on something you mentioned earlier. I think you indicated you would be open to additional screening. Along the left side of the house to block the view of commercial vehicles. Can you provide some additional clarifications on what type of screening that you'd consider for that area, what you would be open to?
If allowed, it will be vinyl privacy fence and that could be done as soon as possible. Consider it done, maybe if they have the material in stock this week.
That would be six foot high, Mr. Garcia.
That is correct. Or otherwise requested a higher one, that we can definitely pre-order something. If they hire needed, we can definitely do that.
So just to recap for members of the board, what I think we've discussed, even trying to capture some of the potential conditions that we were discussing. There were no commercial vehicles parked on site overnight, other than the one truck that's allowed by right, that I think it was the Tundra truck. Having the dump truck parked outside of Maynard overnight. Having all commercial construction equipment and debris is be stored inside. Adding additional screening to the left of the house, specifically, I think that addition of the six foot high vinyl privacy fence. To screen the commercial vehicles. No onsite storage of debris is in the dump truck. And. That was everything I had. Am I missing anything or are there any other items people wanted to add or any of those items you may want to discuss or clarify further? Yep, go right ahead, Brad.
Thank you. Yes, he also, Mr. Garcia also said that he has parking for eight cars. Eight vehicles, he believes, approximately eight vehicles. So when he does have other vehicles coming to his site. If there's more than one of them, any other employees or something that may occur, there's plenty of room for. Any other of the other commercial vehicles and other mental employees during the day that might want to park. That currently parked on the street, parked in his driveway and not on the street such as Brook Street or surrounding area.
Thank you. I'll note that. So no street parking during the day as well.
For commercial vehicles.
For commercial vehicles, yep.
Well, wouldn't that also, that would be commercial vehicles, but would that also be employees?
Yeah. Vehicles associated with the business.
Right, any vehicles associated with.
Even if there are resident, even there are like residential plates. Like no commercial plates.
Yeah, if they're, if they're your employees and you have room for them to park. In your driveway. Then they shouldn't necessarily have to overflow onto the street into the into the local neighborhood.
Missed anything? Any other? Yep, Peter, I see your hand.
The only thing with not parking on Brooks is enforcing all the employees to park in the driveway. Is if any of the employees bring a vehicle that does make a beeping noise, it's forcing him to. Have them park in the driveway thereby making the noise so they can either get in or get out. So if we had a condition where commercial vehicles vehicles that made noise when they back up could park on Brook Street. So that they don't have to back up and make noise to leave, they can just leave by pulling out. Wouldn't that be less disturbing to the neighbors? Of buying the property, just. Pointing out.
Interesting.
I mean, as long as it's during the day, I'm not talking about overnight. And if an employee comes with a vehicle that beats when it backs up. It'd almost be preferable, at least for the the neighbors, I would think on twenty nine Conquer. If that vehicle, instead of beeping when it left or came, like at the property, if it could park on Brook Street. And basically park and then pull away without making any noise, I would think that might be preferable. Even if people aren't necessarily like looking at it.
Yeah, there might be people that live on Brook Street that don't want to have a commercial vehicle parked out in front of their house. For several hours during the day.
That's true.
Let me, let me go back on this. Maybe we're kind of misunderstanding some stuff, things here. I only have one employee that comes with his own vehicle that he parks inside. However, a few weeks ago, I hired a contractor to replace the oil to gas. And that's probably, you guys saw those trucks, but those trucks weren't mine. So that's out of my control. But we did got a permit for that. The inspector came to inspect everything. So just, just throw in there. So that way, I mean, we don't park on Main Street, blocking the street. I mean, sorry, on Conquer Street, blocking the street. Like, is it sometime we do park either the 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 van or the or the truck on the street for a few hours? But that's, like I said, those residential street parking there. Just just making that clear, you know, that we don't have, like I said, it's only one employee. That's here from seven forty five to three o'clock, sometime two thirty, that that's all. But he has his own car and he parks inside.
Okay, but you don't need to park the vehicles, the commercial vehicles on the street. if you have parking spaces on your site. And that, because you said that you have, you just said that you, sometimes they do park on the street for a few hours.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so they, so you could remove those from the street and have a park in your on your property, because you have plenty of parking spaces for that, right?
Yeah, I could, yeah, no, definitely. I can definitely do that. I mean, yeah, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board or clarifications, comments? Okay. Uh, Bill, I do see a hand from the member of the public, but I believe because the uh public comment portion has been closed at this point. We, it's really just open to comments from members of the board and clarifications from the applicant. Is that correct?
The whoever, uh, oh, it's uh Mr. Appport, uh, Mr. Appport, they can ask a question. Uh, they can ask for clarification. No new information can be submitted for the board to consider.
Okay. Yep, go right ahead.
That's what I'm looking for, some clarification, please. Um, if there's an X amount of, you're talking about off-street parking in the area uh allowing employees' vehicles to park there, what about multiple commercial vehicles being in the parking lot during the day, meaning more than two, if there's two employees? Could there be four commercial trucks during the day allowed because multiple employees are allowed to come on site? I'm trying to understand that clarification. That is the board taking that under consideration. Does that, does that question make sense to everyone?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I think I think what you're, yeah, um. The board, right now, the way the bylaws read is that a commercial vehicle, one is one commercial vehicle is allowed overnight associated with a business. Uh, if you're asking, could commercial vehicles several come in and out during the day? Uh, as it stands right now under the zoning bylaws, yes. If it's associated with the business and the business is being permitted by this body, um, they would have some leeway to restrict uh that. But I would say that um we would want to be cognizant that in this case, where like the applicant is saying that the trucks came for a separate you know, a separate, not necessarily associated with a business, uh, that's gonna be very difficult to enforce.
But if there's, if there's his company's trucks, and I understand they'll be coming, dropping off once or twice, I get that. But if there's more than more, the, he had more than two employees overall, he has ten employees. So we have, and I think the board has mentioned that there's trucks, they've seen more than once coming out during the day. And my question is, if I have multiple trucks being left in that parking lot during business hours, because they're doing that's a, that's, I'm trying to understand that clarification, because then we're basically having a business running out of that area. This is not just one or two trucks, it's three to four trucks during business hours. You know, it's not like there's work being done on that house. It's business now being run out of that area. That's my understa- I want to understand the clarification around that.
That would be in the board's purview to regulate. Um, I think that um with it with what this board has done in the past with trade shops or uh home occupations, in some cases, they've said, for example, uh, we've had um instances where the board has said you can have two vehicles come and go an hour. Or, you know, this this sort of restriction. Uh, there's there um that is actually it's commonplace for the zoning board with a a trade shop or home occupation. So that would be in the board's purview. Um, because it is is associated with the requested permit and the per- the special permit while it's designed to be consistent and operate under the zoning bylaws, it also recognizes that there are um there are components of the business that may need to be mitigated, and we have certainly done that before.
Thank you.
So let me ask that question to the board, I suppose. Is that something that you feel uh would be appropriate in this instance? Perhaps putting a limit on the number of trips um either per hour, per day, whatever might make sense, or do you feel that it's sufficiently conditioned as we were discussing? Does anyone have thoughts on that?
I I have a thought of that.
Yep.
Um, so uh, Mr. Garcia has said that um his employee Angel, Supervisor Angel, is the only one that would come to his house um to pick up materials and to um, and he would come perhaps in the morning, and then maybe he might come sometime later in the day. But that would, seems to me that there wouldn't be any reason um why there would be any more um vehicles than than that uh than that traffic, you know, other than Mr. Garcia's own personal uh vehicle that he uses, commercial vehicle. So I think um what he has, Mr. Garcia has stated, is that that is sort of the parameters that he's that he's working.
And I guess, Mr. Garcia, at this point, I think I'd like to hear from you. Is that, do you think that's an accurate assessment? Or a workable condition?
I mean, like I said, I'm I'm just here to make everything work. Whatever you guys suggest is fine with me. I'm not against anything. I just just appreciate whatever the has, I've already said, and especially also neighbors. So it's it's a you, whatever you guys call it out, that's what we're gonna do.
So it seems as though it would be reasonable that uh Mr. Garcia could park his non-beeping truck on his property and that his uh and that Angel can come on in his truck to the property, but he has to park in the driveway. He doesn't bring the um dump truck with the backup alarm. Um, and that any other vehicles have to be bark parked off the property.
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
Well, I, no, I'm just making a suggestion to the board that that might be reasonable.
Okay, no, like, like I said, I mean, the beeping truck is not gonna be here overnight or early in the morning. But I don't think, I don't know if you guys are gonna restrict it to be here like any time of the day, which I, which I think, well, I don't know if that's gonna happen, that you're gonna restrict it from from the, from the, from that truck being on the promises from, I don't know, after ten AM or any time of the day. So I'll be waiting for your, for your guys' call.
I think it'd be helpful to have a better understanding of the potential use of the truck. I don't necessarily want to create an enforcement issue by imposing something that we think is reasonable if it's not going to be compatible with the, if it's going to create an enforcement issue, I'd rather have a frank conversation of how frequently the beeping truck may be there um and then come to some reasonable agreement or impose some conditions to reduce the potential for a nuisance condition personally. Um, but I'd, I'd it's, I think. Can you provide some more clarity and and how often you think that truck would be used during the day?
So, uh, I mean, what I understand it now from from that peeping truck is that it seems like it seems like that that truck can be at the promises at any time. That's what I kinda feel in and understanding, which I I would definitely understand if you say like, don't be here from from like don't be here at early in the morning or late in the evening. I I totally will understand that, but you have to keep in mind that it's a construction truck. And Angel will be driving that. So I can't prohibit Angel, or I can't have Angel to park it in another town and take a Uber to the to the office just to grab whatever he needs, you know what I mean? Like, like I said, that truck's gonna be coming in and out to the premises, but I can make it happen to be here after ten AM. I mean, I don't I mean, some people still are sleeping at that time, but uh there's not much that I can do. I will understand five, six, seven, and maybe eight AM. And late in the evenings, I will call like from seven and on. I was there from seven PM to to nine AM, the truck can be making any noise. Does, is that clear, or or I have to sell this truck and got another one that doesn't have the beeping thing?
I think that's, that's helpful. Hossi, did you have anything to add?
No, if I were the president of the world, there wouldn't be any beeping trucks, because nobody pays attention to them anyways. Everybody's annoyed by them.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
May I?
I will add that the beeping is extremely important for for those who who do have disabilities and are are walking. Um, and especially for the the dump truck driver themselves, because uh if you've ever driven one of those trucks, it's very hard to see. So I, beeping is frustrating for me as zoning perspective, but very important from a transportation safety aspect.
Perhaps, uh, Madam Chair, may I uh make a suggestion?
Go right ahead.
We have, we have a permit that's gonna be issued for one year. We have precedent of how we've regulated commercial vehicles coming and going. And by that, I mean, for example, we've had uh professional practitioners that see patients or customers. We've said no more than two vehicles per hour, or whatever the case may be. Perhaps the way to do would be uh say between the hours of X and X, there shall be no more than you know, two vehicles or whatever it is uh per hour um to be entering and exiting the the property. If if vehicles are coming and going six or seven times an hour, people feel in residential neighborhood understandably so, would feel they're living in a, why don't we just live in a commercial area then? On the other hand, a a a car or or even a truck coming, you know, once an hour or something driving a driveway, if that could be with any normal situation in a residential neighborhood. So using our our previous decisions as a precedent, recognizing that the it's a finite amount of time for the permit, and clearly the the um applicant understands the neighborhood's concerns, the board's concerns, and staff's concerns. Um, perhaps we could use that for foundation to um uh create some conditions.
Thank you. So I think, two things, I think I heard the applicant mentioned they would be open to limiting the beeping truck to between early, I think, ten, ten AM to nine PM, and maybe that coupled with adding an additional condition, as Bill just mentioned, might address the concerns we heard about noise. Um, Bill had mentioned, I think, two vehicles per hour. Does that seem two vehicles per hour that are associated with the business and during and exiting the property, not necessarily personal vehicle usage?
But they can be parked? Can like more like, can can more than than two vehicles be parked but not exit in and out?
Yes, I think we were previously discussing in terms of daytime parking, no street parking during the day for vehicles associated with the business, they would all need to be parked on site. And then in terms of actual entering and exiting, uh, no more than two vehicle trips exiting and entering per hour.
No, I I understand about the the parking on off the street. I mean, saying like, can they be parked inside in the driveway but not exit in and out? Like I said, my office guy, he bring his car and that, and he gonna probably exile when he leaves. But Angel is the one that comes like maybe twice or three times a week here, you know? But that'll that'll be more than that.
Yeah, so I think they're two separate, they would be two separate conditions. I don't think, there's not necessarily a condition that limits the at this point, the number of vehicles parked in the driveway. It's just limited to the number of vehicles entering and exiting. Does that clarify things for you?
The limit would only be in commercial vehicles, Madam Chair.
Yes, yeah.
Overnight, 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 right?
Does that address your question?
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, everything is related to me.
Okay.
I mean, we, I'm I'm very clear with what what I have to do with the the truck.
Okay. So does the board feel all right with that two vehicles per hour, two vehicles associated with the business per hour restriction?
I I can't imagine that he's gonna have two vehicles per hour. Uh, and I think the um hours of the truck that does beep, I think, nine in the morning, maybe to seven at night. That's it.
Thanks, Hossi.
Especially, you know, in the winter time, kids, kids go to bed early.
But what do they do when we have like a big storm and and we have to have the flowers here to to be pushing the snow out of your, our, our, their driveway? They have a beeping truck too. You know, just it's just, I mean, what you heard every, all night, when is, when they're applying, like, be eat all around the the town, so.
That's exciting. That means a school or a snow day the next day. I get, everybody gets excited about that. Not to worry.
Okay.
Anything else from members of the board? I'll recap, I think, what we have drafted as potential conditions. Uh, let's see. So I think we have mentioned no commercial vehicles parked on site overnight other than the one by right uh commercial vehicle, uh, which at this point, I think we're referencing as a Tundra truck. Uh, the dump truck would be parked outside of Maynard overnight. No street parking during the day for vehicles associated with the business. They must be parked on the driveway or in the garage. Um, let, trucks with a backup alarm uh would be limited to parking on site from nine AM to seven PM. Additionally, uh, no more than two vehicle trips per hour uh for those vehicles that would relate to vehicles associated with the business entering and exiting the property. Um, commercial construction equipment debris is must be stored inside. And then there must be some additional screening added to left side of the house. And we discussed today uh that would be the form of six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence. And then uh no onsite storage of debris is in the dump dump truck.
Um, I I had one more, if I may, that.
Yep, please.
Uh, uh, no combustible materials associated with the um the business um would be on site. In in other words, um, there are household materials such as gasoline for lawnmower or something that is, I think, typical in a residential neighborhood. Barrels of roofing asphalt or whatever material may be combustible. Um, the applicant has stated that, you know, that's not what they, where they store this. And but I think that would be a good condition to add, and maybe um the applicant can clarify, you know, what would be on there, but but the spirit of it would be not to have like this, you know, the material that wouldn't be typically found in the residential neighborhood and associated with the business to be stored.
Um, I don't know if this is ever done, but do we ever ask that an applicant have a smoke alarm in their garage? I mean, in a business like this, um, does it make sense, or is that really not our purview to ask that that they have a smoke alarm?
I believe it's totally in the period.
Mm hmm.
I think there's already plenty in that garage. I think there's already plenty in that garage. Someone had like ten alarms in that garage before.
Okay. It sounds like that may already be addressed, Leslie, but we can add that to that list of conditions, just to ensure that it's included. Okay.
Could you say that one more time, please?
I think we're saying we can add, have a requirement to have a smoke alarm in the garage to our list of conditions. It may already be addressed by existing conditions, but this will ensure.
Okay, I can word that so that it's there.
Thank you, Bill. All right. So I think at this point, unless anyone has any other conditions or comments on these potential conditions, I think I'd be looking for motion.
Madam Chair, just, if I may look at one more thing real quick, while the board is, just wanna make sure. Okay, the, I was just looking at the, the fire department. Fire chief didn't have any specifics, so I think these conditions added are appropriate. You know, it certainly we're going above and beyond. And the reason this is a trade shop, just to be clear, because I've had some questions come in about, you know, what is a trade shop? What is a trade shop? In this case, we've had to defer to the building commissioner on certain uses, what falls where and, and what shouldn't be considered something. As the board, I think, is aware, we are, we are overhauling the home occupation trade shop categories. These are lessons that we're, we're hopefully going to be able to incorporate and make for a better overall zoning bylaw. Right now, we have to work with what we got and you know, having the abbreviated one year period certainly should provide a level of comfort. And as now, if the board did choose to approve a special permit, there is, it's memorialized the conditions and, and that is how it will be enforced, is utilizing the special permit. And in addition to the zoning bylaws to ensure compliance.
Bill, just a quick question. The requirement for the business owner to seek renewal from the ZBA again in one year? Is that already a requirement? Or is that something that we should condition?
No, that's in the, that's in the bylaw.
That's in the bylaw, okay.
Yeah, for a trade shop, you know, we, the way we condition it is that should the bylaw change, because we've been trying, we've been working on this now for years, so. You know, that, you know, that it may be retroactive or may not. But i- in this case, we have something that's, you know, just, it doesn't hurt to just stipulate it's a one-year permit. The board and, and the applicant comes before the board. And if everything's hunky dory and everything has been taken care of, and there's no problem, then it's what the board wants to do then. If there's an issue that's serious in the meantime, it gives us a special permit, gives us a vehicle to enforce. And we can do that. And hopefully, there's no problems and everybody's happy. This board's worked hard to try to address all the concerns. And I think that from.
And Bill, is that, that's a public hearing that they would have to do in one year, I guess? Correct?
That's correct. At this, at this point, it is a public hearing. There is discussion, you know, and this for another day. Whether that's appropriate, but as of now, yes, that is what it is, and that would apply.
So if neighbors were to have concerns, they would just contact us directly in between this time?
Oh, yes, right. Exactly. The same, the same as any other code enforcement issue. The difference is this, this has a special permit that would be a little more specific than if somebody just said, you know, my neighbor's making racket in the middle of the night. We had to send a code, open code case. And because somebody's playing music in the middle of the night or something like that, this is attached to a special permit, it's gonna have. So in addition to what's normally a bylaw or zoning bylaw, there are the conditions of this permit that are enforceable.
Great.
So I think at this point, we'd be looking for a motion that the petition meets the criteria for the special permit as described in section three of the staff report. And that the board approves the application for a special permit for a trade shop use specifically general contracting at 27 Concord Street, subject to the conditions that we had just enumerated.
I would ask for a separate vote on each repub- of each violation, please.
But each what?
The, the, the board has found that the special permit request meets the criteria. You know, our finding. Sometimes we lump them together and sometimes we do separate. I think for consistency, it's easier to just say that the board acknowledges that the finding was or was not that's consistent.
And I missed, before we make that, before somebody makes that motion, I do see your hand up, Mr. Garcia. Is there something you wanted to?
Yes, um, I mean, it seems that, the, I mean, the problem here is all the, the stuff that are gonna be stored inside the garage and the vehicle. But let me ask this. I don't know if this is out of topic, but let me, let me know. And then we, and I can file for another permit. Can I, I mean, if I were to remove all the, the, the commercial vehicles and not have anything stored at this location, right? I don't have a use for this garage. It's pretty much like riding my property, but doing anything. Can I, after, or can I, that be used at least just for the office people? That's not gonna be coming in and out? Like, if I can use that big garage as an office home? You know, when people just come in in the morning with no beeping trucks and just sit down and then just leave around three or four o'clock? I don't know if this question's related, but just wanted to throw it in there.
In my opinion, and again, this is just my opinion, the idea of a trade shop, which has been brought up, is, is pretty specific that it is to facilitate a trade. And in this case, where there's, there's certain parameters have been set up. If you're talking about an office where people are gonna be coming in and working all day, in my opinion, that is a different use altogether. And it would be that would not be the spirit of a home occupation or a trade shop. We're talking clearly incidental to the, the primary use of the home, which in this case, you know, is a residence. If, and I'm not suggesting you're gonna do a call center or anything like that, but the, but the idea is that this is something that's incidental. You know, and you've made it clear, you know, somebody may pop in here and there during the day, and the board has accommodated that with the limitations they've placed on it. But in my opinion, that would not be an appropriate use.
Yeah, when I say the office, now I mean, like, gonna have 10, 10, 20 people working, like, probably like three or four, you know what I mean? Like, now we only three inside this one. But the other one is big enough to at least have like four, maybe four people, five people there, you know? In, in any case, other business keep growing. But I mean, I see there's a lot of things going on here with the trucks and the debris. So, I mean, just.
In, in my opinion, no. And I, I, I would, I would not want to, I think, we run the risk here of creeping out of the scope of this original application.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and we're looking for someone to make a motion. First, I think the petition meets the criteria for a special permit as described in section three of the staff report. Do we have that motion?
I don't have the bandwidth. I can, I can get as far as that. I honest to God don't have the bandwidth to finish it. I'm so tired. I am screaming tired.
It's right in the staff report, I think, the basics.
Yeah, well. Okay, I make a motion to grant the special permit for the use of, for a trade shop use for general contracting at 27 Concord Street, Maynard, in the general residential district. Given the the restrictions that were already enumerated, which mainly partially have written down here.
Well, Leslie, that's an excellent motion, and it should hold. But first, can I ask you to make a motion that the the board has found that the that the applicant has met the criteria for the special permit? And then go back to your vote.
Given that the owner has met the criteria for the special permit, do I have to enumerate this? Is this the not detrimental, not more detrimental to the neighborhood stuff?
Just call it out as in section X of the staff report.
Oh, as in section three of the Maynard zoning bylaws governing the accessory uses and other uses. Section 3.2.5 of the zoning, oh, given that the section 3.2.5 provides the the criteria in which the zoning board of appeals may grant the special permit to allow the trade shop use?
Yeah, that is consistent.
I can see, I just can't.
All right. The, the, what we're looking for is a motion that the special permit request is consistent with the criteria as listed in whatever section of the staff reported this. And then we have a vote on that. And then we just do your, your, your first one is Ducky, and it's up on, it's teed up. The.
Well, it's section 3.2 of the Maynard zoning bylaw.
The bylaw of the staff report.
The staff report is.
Oh, section three of the staff report, I believe.
And it's possible, yeah.
So Leslie, I think if you could amend that motion just to reference section three of the staff report, the criteria is outlined in section three of the staff report. We can vote on it once it's seconded.
Say that again, please.
I think you just need to amend your motion saying that it, the petition meets the criteria for a special permit as described in section three of the staff report, instead of referencing the section of the zoning bylaw.
Men that and no, I mean, I literally can't. I am that. I literally don't have that bandwidth right now.
I'm sorry. All right, can somebody?
That it meets the criteria of section three of the Maynard zoning bylaw? Is that what you're asking?
Section three of the staff report.
Yep, perfect. And then we're like, we need someone to second that. Do we have a second? Thank you, Peter. And then we'll start the roll call vote on that, starting with Leslie. Okay, yes, Brad?
Yes.
Yes, okay, John? Okay, Peter? Yep, and myself. I also vote yes, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. And then we would need the part two. Leslie, I think you made this motion. Can we just look at a second on that, Bill, or do we need to redo it?
We have it, we have it on the table. And her, yeah, and Leslie read the zoning bylaws as was in section three, and that's what was on the table. So finding that the, the trade shop criteria subject to the conditions and regular by the board.
Right, including the provision that it's for one year, which I guess is a given, right?
Yes, but it's gonna have on record.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. And for the roll call vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Yes, Brad?
Yes.
John? I see you, Peter?
Yeah.
And myself, I vote yes also, so that's another unanimous vote. Thank you, everyone. Bill, I think normally this is when Paul would turn it over to you to give a quick update to the applicant with the next steps are. So keeping, keeping with that, I'll let you take it away.
Paul does have an introduction going. Mr. Garcia, um, the way this works is that I will draft up a decision in my office for this finding and this determination. It will be ready probably within a week. At that point, it will be filed with the town clerk. It will have an appeal period of 20 days. If no appeal is filed, you will be able to pick up the application or the decision, and you'll be good to go. In this case, we will, we'll catch up with you about the particular details about renewals and stuff like this. But I think you'll be it'll be pretty clear as in the next couple of days. But do you have any questions specifically from my office?
Um, no, I'm all set at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your support and help tonight.
Thank you. And Bill, is there any, any other planning, any other matters on the agenda? Or should we just look for the motion to adjourn?
Um, I'm kind of lost right now. I'm drawing a blank. I don't think, um, I don't think I have any. Yeah. No, I think that's it.
All right. Well, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Leslie. Peter, do you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And do, I guess, one last roll call, starting with Leslie?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
John? Peter? And myself.
What about me?
Oh, Paul, apologies. I forgot. You can jump back in now.
Oh.
That's the most important vote of the evening, Paul.
Yes.
Thank you. And myself. So it passes unanimously.
Thanks, everybody. That was, that was a good meeting. I know it was late, but I think I, it was very helpful and I really appreciate all the effort. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Night.
Everyone, good night.
Night.
Night.